Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. The special session tonight has two purposes, and I'll ask the clerk to announce the meeting and to call the roll.
You are hereby notified that I can call a special session of the Unified Government of Wyndham County and the City of Kansas to be held Thursday, August 7, 2014 at 5:00 PM for a review of the boards and commissions, followed by the co-adjournments. Earl Callen, Philbrook.
Here.
Walker. Townsend. McCarren.
Here.
Bravia.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Kane.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Hollis.
Here. All right, thank you very much. So these are two topics that the commission had requested work on. We pushed them out past the budget. We are past the budget, and now we are going to take on some of these things. A reminder to the commission, if you have topics that you want a special session on in order to talk about, please let me know. We have a number of things that we're putting out in front of us. One of those you'll see tonight at our 7 o'clock is a presentation by the Mid-America Regional Council to talk about the work that they do. So there's a lot of opportunities to get information in front of the commission and frankly, in front of the public. So if there's something that you feel like the public needs to be aware of, of the work of the unified government, let me know. We can do a dialogue about it or have a presentation about it. Tonight, we're talking about boards and commissions, and this was requested by Commissioner Walters. And so we're going to start off, but I will ask Joe Connor to lead us out in this process.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have put together, you know, what we feel is the beginnings of a boards and commissions report. We're focusing tonight on the boards and commissions that the majority of the commissioners have appointees to. There are other boards and commissions that are either by a certain position or title, or by the mayor only, or a lot of other variations of that. But we wanted to focus tonight on just the ones that affect, you know, you as a group the most. Jody Boding, our chief legal counsel, is going to help me with the presentation tonight, as she has a lot of experience in this area as well. So if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and get started. The first slide talks about the general provisions that are in our UG code currently. You can kind of read through there, but there's some, you know, some generalities. And again, some of the boards and commissions may have a little slight variation on that depending on the authority of the board, or its purpose, or if there's any state statute involved, or anything like that. But in general, those are the things that are in our current code over, that govern boards and commissions. So we broke down, one of the things that we had heard from the commissioners about boards and committees is which ones are required? Which ones do we have to have to maintain a program, to receive funding, or that we just have to have in general? So the first slide here is boards and committees by Kansas statute. You've got the Community Corrections Adult Advisory Board, the Library Board, and then the Planning Commission. And we've also, we've referenced the authority in the second column. We've also got the current number of members and how many vacancies there are, and terms, you know, frequency, how often do they meet, and do they receive any kind of stipend or reimbursement of some kind?
Can I ask a question? It shows there are 11 vacancies on the Community Corrections Adult Advisory Board. Is that right?
Yes. If you look at the star below that, they're on for the meeting tonight.
All 11 appointees will be appointed tonight?
It's a slate.
It's a slate. Thank you. Okay.
I'm working on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions on those? Okay. Next is the boards and committees are set by ordinance. And you can see the list there. I didn't want to go through and look at each one. Some of them, one thing I did want to note, a lot of the start dates on this authority says 98. That doesn't mean that that's when the committee was started. I think a lot of that goes back to when we unified in October of 97. Code had to be rewritten, ordinances had to be redone, so they were dated 98. So a lot of them, you know, go back prior to consolidation, but just had to be updated because of the change in the form of government. Okay? And then committees by resolution. You can see there's two there. Again, a little change in the terms for the area-wide advisory council on aging. The terms are two years, but you cannot serve more than four consecutive years. So you can get two two-year terms only on that particular board. Then board and committee by ordinance and resolution. And again, the ordinance and resolutions that we're talking about are in our current code now, and these are the things that we currently, you know, have on the books for us. And then a board and committee by charter ordinance and resolution, that would be the park board.
Now, just for clarification, the two that list compensation, well, the three. One, golf board, they get to play golf. The, right, that's true. And the others, the park board and the planning and planning commission, they receive $100 per meeting. Is that right?
Yeah.
Per month.
It's not considered compensation. It's considered mileage reimbursement.
So they get $100 per month for mileage?
Mileage, correct.
Okay. All right.
What about the park board?
The park board also. The park board and the planning commission are the two that receive $100 per month for mileage reimbursement.
Correct.
Okay?
So the last slide are things that, you know, Jody worked on specifically, but, and this is the beginnings of maybe a conversation about how to move this forward, is, you know, areas that possibly require clarification. Jody, you want to walk through those with the commission?
Yes. There were three areas that were, it isn't stated anywhere in the ordinance. And the first is where specific qualifications or experience is required in the, either the statute or the ordinance. And the process of addressing those positions is not uniform across all the boards and commissions. So staff recommendation, this is just, there could be others, but this is, the mayor could nominate eligible individuals from a list of people who meet the required qualifications. And then those names are submitted, oh, and also commissioners and the agency or department associated with the board or commissioner can add names to that list. The nominees, then the mayor submits the nominees' names to the full commission for approval. Because that doesn't work so well with the 11, because coordinating 11 with the different requirements is sometimes pretty difficult to manage administratively.
So let's give an example. So...
The one tonight is an example.
Yes, and that is...
There are...
Community Corrections Board.
Adult Community Corrections Advisory Board. And there are five who, individuals who serve by virtue of their position. The sheriff, the district attorney, I can't remember.
Chief judge.
The others. And then, so that, and it's a 12-person board. So the other seven, they have to represent, they have to be diverse by race, gender, and then some of them have to have particular occupations. And that, coordinating that is very difficult. And then, you know, spreading it out among all 11 of you is really, would be, is administratively hard. So what we did is, the department, the Community Corrections Department, which is charged with that board, they sent a name of qualified individuals to you that would meet the diverse, diversity requirements for that board. And so you selected those, and you're submitting them. It was submitted to the standing committee. Standing committee approved it, and now it's being submitted to the full commission tonight for approval. It's a slate.
And that's, that one is set up by state?
It's in statute. And then we also have an ordinance. So when we say, there's many of these that have both a state statute and a local ordinance or resolution.
Commissioner Markley.
I was just going to ask for clarification. So you're saying for number one, your recommendation is related to the boards that have those kind of specific qualifications?
Yes.
So some of the boards don't really have that specific qualification.
Correct.
Those we would keep doing the way we're doing.
Then you go back to the first slide, and that's our general fallback, default position of, a board is constituted with 11 members, and each of the commissioners and the mayor get an appointment.
Well, and I can give a good example of that. So there's one of the boards, and I think it's the Fire Code Appeals Board one, that has very specific qualifications. And District 6 is supposed to appoint a union journeyman carpenter. The problem is, the board meets during the day, when it does meet, and how many union journeyman carpenters do you know who can just up and leave their job during the day? So I did everything, including having the poor guys at the union call around to all their members, and I still couldn't find an appointment. And I finally just told the clerk, I can't appoint anybody. I've got no one. So that would be a situation where it would be easier for one person to try to organize and figure out who those, who can fill those slots than for me to scramble around trying to, you know, find somebody who happens to fit that mold.
I think that's right. And that one, and the one Rental License Appeals Board, I think also has requirements in terms of, you need a realtor, you need an attorney or an architect. So for those, now, the key is, I think, like with the Community Corrections, it was very helpful for Community Corrections to take the initiative and identify people, not only that fit the slots, but were willing to do it. That's a lot of legwork. And so to have that department do it, and I don't know, I think those are the three. The Schmidt Advisory Board is another one that's challenging, the downtown Schmidt, because they have to be a property owner with downtown, or a representative of a property owner downtown.
Right.
And that one's hard, because not everybody has a contact that way. So again, for that one, it would be helpful to have recommendations given.
They do.
And they do, from the board, to have that coordinated. And, but I still want the, even if it says the mayor nominates, I would still want the commission to vet those through the standing committee process before it even comes to the full commission for vote. I mean, I just want to make sure there's due process to make sure that those commissions are properly vetted in terms of that. But I think for expedience, have you identified all of those that have these specific recommendations?
No, not at this time. But this is a standardized process then that can be used if it meets with all of your approval.
For those.
We would add it to the Chapter 2, the general rules governing boards and commissions.
Now, one of these, we just moved, we just merged with the planning commission.
Board of Zoning Appeals. And it's sort of, it's referenced on here. It says, Planning Commission, it says in parentheses, zoning and appeals. It says, Commission Action 121613. I think that's when the, then we merged it.
Yes. Page three, Planning Commission, in a parenthesis, zoning and appeals. So that group is serving in both functions now. Okay.
Which is brilliant.
No, really a good idea.
Brilliant.
Really a good idea. Okay.
Okay. The next item is terms of office. That's been a continuing problem to administer from the clerk's office and the commission office, because there's no standard start date for the terms. And so there's always a revolving list of vacancies, either occurring by expiration or resignation. And there's been some confusion, because it's not spelled out in the ordinance, whether their term starts upon appointment and then is four years, or they're filling out an unexpired term. I think, and if we had a standardized start date, I think we'd get away, it would be easier to administer. So that is the recommendation of staff. And I threw out June 1st, an odd number of years, so it would more likely coincide with the term of the appointing authority. And June, you get elected in April, and then you get sworn in in mid to late April. And then you have a few weeks to get your feet on the ground. So June, and then you get hit with the list of appointments you need to make. So you could choose another date other than June 1st if you think that's too early. So...
Maybe we could even move that to July 1st.
Yeah, but I knew it would end the budget.
Well, no, that's true. But yeah, that's exactly right. So I think that's a good idea to standardize the start dates. And then it would also stagger all the committees, so everyone wouldn't be turning over the same year.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
So it would standardize when the commissioner comes in, they make that nomination. And it's important to note that the commissioners and the mayor make nominations, and the commission appoints, because it's an important distinction.
Well, you'd have to have maybe a discussion about whether you wanted them to be coincident with your term. If you just did them every two years, then somebody could be voted out of office. A new person that come in and it'd have a member that's sort of midterm of a four-year, midpoint of their four-year term.
Aren't there a couple of them that state something about just...
Please speak into the microphone to ask your question.
Let me get my questions together. Are there a couple of them that state something about that they serve during the term of the person who appoints them?
The park board is the only one I can recall off the top of my head now. I did not go back and read every single ordinance on every single board. But I do remember the park board's legislation says that.
Okay, all right. And that's a topic that's come up before. Should that appointment be co-terminous with the appointer, or should it be a four-year appointment? And the discussion really is, since the commission nominates, and the whole, since the commissioner nominates and the whole commission votes, they're essentially appointed by the Board of Commissioners, not by the individual who was just elected. So we could do it either way. Currently, the way it is, is that most of them, except for the park board, are not co-terminous with whoever nominated, the particular commissioner.
They should be. They should be appointed at a specific four-year term, in my opinion. They should be appointed, June 1st is fine, July 1st, and serve four years. Because when you first get elected, you are not going to be able, in most cases, to find someone that quickly as you get your feet on the ground. And a July 1 to July 1 type of four-year term allows someone who's newly elected to put their own person in office. And that's how I feel about it.
So are you, okay, so you feel like it, I just want to, I'm not sure I understood you, should be co-terminous with the commissioner, or should not be?
Well, I mean, and there are those that are staggered, because we're staggered.
Right.
That way, everybody elected in off-years, whatever an off-year is, gets to appoint somebody July 1, June 1. I'm not hard on the date. But it gives them an opportunity, while the board continues its work, even though the new commissioner has not decided on who they want for that position.
Okay.
So like, for example?
We have to, I should have asked you to use the microphone, but we do need to use the microphone.
If they didn't hear me in that microphone, then we need new microphones.
May I say so?
Commissioner Philbrook.
So, so for example, the ones that we put in, the ones of us that were elected in 2013, would go along with our four terms. And then when you have your election in 2015, same thing. So you're staggered.
Exactly.
Every two years, you're having a half turnover.
So they're all staggered in two-year increments. And as in my case, I've reappointed several people that my predecessors have appointed, because they're good and so forth. But you have the option to appoint someone new, if you can find someone.
That's right.
Because it's not always easy to find a new appointee who wants to do the work.
So the term would start on July 1st, whether you didn't get around, you didn't find somebody maybe till August or September?
But the term would be consistent.
July 1st.
That would be helpful, because they are on a pretty mixed rotation.
I'm confident that the law says that until someone is duly appointed and confirmed, the person in place is a holdover office holder until a new appointee is confirmed by the commission. So...
The problem is, sometimes they stop at... That's sort of the general common law rule. I'm recommending that we clarify it and put it in ordinance, that they do continue to serve until the new appointment is made.
Yep. Okay.
We're not all good about filling that appointment by July 1.
And it's not fair to those different groups not to have a quorum to be able to operate.
That's correct.
So, thank you.
Okay. So another recommendation, to have a consistent start time, and to codify that the old appointee remains the appointee until a new one is made, even after their term has expired. Okay?
And then the third point is, there's no current provision for staff support. And so that's kind of spotty. Some committees, boards and commissions have staff support. It's just by practice. It's, but others don't have anything. And there is, in the general ordinance that you saw on the first slide, rules that the committee chair has to prepare an agenda. Doesn't say anything about notice of meetings, but the committees I've worked with, they send out notice of meetings. They are supposed to cause minutes to be taken and file those with the clerk. Well, those are all sort of administrative duties that are hard to do if you're chairing a meeting. And so I have not checked this with the county administrator, since he's out this week. And so, but I would recommend that staff support be assigned to each committee. And I think the idea was, you would look through these boards and commissions and see if there were any that are no longer active, and that you might want to cut down on the number of boards and commissions to, if they're not really performing a function that's needed anymore, then we'd have less need for staff support.
One of the things that we're doing as staff is to try to call these chair people and ask them, how active has your committee been? You know, what kind of things are you working on? The ones, you know, that we don't have staff support for. To try to bring back a report on that, on the viability of those committees. So we're working on that as well.
Well, and I think as a rule, if it's a committee worth having, it'd be worth having staff support.
Yeah.
If it's not a committee worth having, or if it's, or conversely, if it's not worth staff support, it's not a committee worth having.
Right.
Is that fair? Commissioner Walker.
Chief Counsel, you would agree, would you not, that it's our decision whether staff support is provided to a committee and not the city administrator, or county administrator?
I, you can say whoever you want it to be.
Well, by ordinance, we can prescribe that staff support be provided.
Yes.
It's his obligation to fulfill.
You can direct...
That's right.
The county administrator to do that.
That's right. Okay. So we have, I think, some solid recommendations. I think this is a good starting point. I think we open it up for discussion, because I think, Commissioner Walters, your question was the last statement.
Yeah.
So do you want to articulate that in terms of what you'd like to see?
I can give it a try. Yeah, this goes back to when I was really first elected and got into office and learned that there were so many boards and commissions that I was not really all that familiar with. And while we have a description of what those responsibilities are, it seemed like this commission would be better served if we had more information and more dialogue with these various boards and commissions. And also could convince ourselves that they were, you know, working at peak productivity and efficiency, and doing the work of the public that we want them to be doing. And, or if there were some things that we could do to enable them to do even better. And conversely, there may be some that could be retired. There could be some that could be combined, as we combined one last December. So that's the kind of overview that I was looking for. And I appreciate this, because this gives good background on some of the history of some of these boards. But yeah, it's the next step that I'm really most interested in, is how can we have a good dialogue with these boards? How do they know what the will of the commission is, so that they can use that in their day-to-day operations, or the oversight of their particular domain? And how we can all just share information and increase the overall benefit to the public?
Do you want me to speak?
Is that clear?
It is. It is clear. And I think what I'm looking for are suggestions on how to get to that level. I mean, we could, I can speak to some of these, but a lot of it's anecdotal. I think we're going to need to come up with a structure in terms of how we evaluate each of these, and what we're looking for. I think these recommendations are a good place to start, but it doesn't answer the fundamental question about whether or not these committees are needed. So Commissioner Maddox, and then Philbrook.
Thank you. My concern lies somewhat in a different place. My concern is that, once the commissioner takes office, would, I'd like to know why, within our standards or ordinance, can we not replace, if it's an appointee of ours, can we not replace a person who may have two more years? Or, because it seems like, at the end of the day, if we are trying to have someone that represents our ideals or our community, and maybe the person that was appointed before we took office does not align, how do we, how do, you know, what's the reason for not being able to put a person in place before the term is over?
Well, if we move forward this recommendation, and I think Walker just spoke to this, then every appointment you have would begin June or July 1, whichever we settle on, immediately after your election. So that wouldn't happen anymore. So every appointment that you have would come up at the beginning of your term, and you would have an opportunity to appoint for the next four years during your term. That's what I understood.
But it could happen that you change your mind about that person's performance, even if you've appointed him. And it is an interesting dilemma, you know, of what if somebody is appointed, you know, I appoint somebody, and then after a year or so, I really am not satisfied, or I find somebody who is more interested and better qualified? Is there a vehicle? Or are they in there for four years, and into discussion?
They are appointed for a term of four years, but I think you could write the ordinance and provide for removal. Since they were appointed by the full commission, I think the removal would have to be done by the full commission as well.
Well, that's a harsh word.
Yeah. I'm open to suggestions. That's another word.
Commissioner Philbrook.
I think there does need to be a vehicle for that, because there are sometimes people that have wonderful intentions to do great things, but things happen, and then they can't fulfill on these committees. And then you're left with dead airspace.
You can resign, of course. A board member could resign.
And, okay, that's nice, but I still think there needs to be another vehicle, because not everybody's willing to resign. Sometimes it looks good on a resume. And that's all I had to say on that particular subject. So if we were to have a staff person as a liaison for each one of these committees, then I don't see why there'd be a big problem with staff putting forth information on each of the meetings to all of the commissioners, so we can see what's going on. I mean...
The copy of the minutes, though.
Yeah, or a copy of the minutes.
The minutes are supposed to be filed with the clerk, and I think you could direct the clerk to provide those to the commission.
Distribute those to each commissioner. I think that's an easy ask.
But make that an autopilot thing.
Sure. I think that would be inherent, if you've got a staff person, you know.
You would hope.
If you don't have, well, yeah.
You would hope, but I don't like to take anything for granted. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Jody, I think there is currently a provision in...
So the term would start on July 1st, whether you didn't get around, you didn't find somebody maybe till August or September.
But the term would be consistent.
July 1st.
That would be helpful because they are on a pretty mixed rotation.
I'm confident that the law says that until someone is duly appointed and confirmed, the person in place is a holdover office holder until a new appointee is confirmed by the commission.
That's the, that's sort of the general common law rule. I'm recommending that we clarify it and put it in ordinance that they do continue to serve until the new appointment is made.
Yep.
We're not all good about filling that appointment by July 1.
And it's not fair to those different groups not to have a quorum to be able to operate.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so another recommendation, to have a consistent start time and to codify that the old appointee remains the appointee until a new one is made even after their term has expired. Okay?
And then the third point is there's no current provision for staff support, and so that's kind of spotty. Some, some committees, boards and commissions have staff support, it's just by practice. It's, but others don't have anything. And there is in the general ordinance that you saw on the first slide, rules that the committee chair has to prepare an agenda, doesn't say anything about notice of meetings, but the committees I've worked with, they send out notice of meetings. They are supposed to cause minutes to be taken and file those with the clerk. Well, those are all sort of administrative duties that are hard to do if you're chairing a meeting. And so I have not checked this with the county administrator since he's out this week. And so, but I would recommend that staff support be assigned to each committee. And I think the idea was you would look through these boards and commissions and see if there were any that are no longer active and that you might want to cut down on the number of boards and commissions to, if they're not really performing a function that's needed anymore, then we'd have less need for staff support.
One of the things that we're doing as, as staff is to try to call these chair people and ask them, how active has your committee been? You know, what, what kind of things are you working on? The ones, you know, that we don't have staff support for, to try to bring back a report on that, on the viability of those, of those committees. So we're, we're working on that as well.
Well, and I think as a rule, if it's a committee worth having, it'd be worth having staff support.
Yeah.
If it's not a committee worth having, or if it's, or conversely, if it's not worth staff support, it's not a committee worth having.
Right.
Is that fair? Commissioner Walker.
Chief Counsel, you would agree, would you not, that it's our decision whether staff support is provided to a committee and not the city administrator, or county administrator?
I, you can say whoever you want it to be.
Well, by ordinance, we can prescribe that staff support be provided.
Yes.
It's his obligation to fulfill.
You can direct.
That's right.
The county administrator to do that.
That's right. Okay, so we have, I think, some solid recommendations. I think this is a good starting point. I think we open it up for discussion because I think Commissioner Walters, your question was the last statement.
Yeah.
So do you want to articulate that in terms of what you'd like to see?
I can give it a try. Yeah, this goes back to when I was really first elected and, and got into office and learned that there were so many boards and commissions that I was not really all that familiar with. And while we have a description of what those responsibilities are, it seemed like this commission would be better served if we had more information and more dialogue with these various boards and commissions. And also could convince ourselves that they were, you know, working at, at peak productivity and efficiency and doing the, the work of the public that we want them to be doing. And, or if there were some things that we could do to, to enable them to, to do even better. And conversely, there may be some that could be retired, there could be some that could be combined as we combined one last December. So that's the kind of overview that I was looking for. And I appreciate this because this gives good background on some of the history of some of these boards. But yeah, it's the next step that I'm really most interested in is how, how can we have a good dialogue with these boards? How do they know what the will of the commission is so that they can, can use that in their day-to-day operations or, or the oversight of their particular domain? And how we can all just share information and, and increase the overall benefit to the public? Is that clear?
It is, it is clear. And I think what I'm looking for are suggestions on how to get to that level. I mean, we could, I can speak to some of these, but a lot of it's anecdotal. I think we're going to need to come up with a, a structure in terms of how we evaluate each of these and what we're looking for. I think these recommendations are, are a good place to start, but it doesn't answer the fundamental question about whether or not these committees are needed. So Commissioner Maddox and then Philbrook.
Thank you. My concern lies somewhat in a different place. My concern is that once the commissioner takes office, would, I'd like to know why within our standards or ordinance, can we not replace, if it's an appointee of ours, can we not replace a person who may have two more years or, because it seems like at the end of the day, if we are trying to have someone that represents our ideals or our community and, and maybe the person that was appointed before we took office does not align, how do we, how do, you know, what's, what's the reason for not being able to put a person in place before the term is over?
Well, if we move forward this recommendation, and I think Walker just spoke to this, then every appointment you have would begin June or July 1, whichever we settle on, immediately after your election. So that wouldn't happen anymore. So every appointment that you have would come up at the beginning of your term and you would have an opportunity to appoint for the next four years during your term. That's what I understood.
But it could happen that, that you change your mind about that person's performance, even if you've appointed him. And it is an interesting dilemma, you know, of what if somebody is appointed? I, you know, I appoint somebody and then after a year or so, I really am not satisfied, or I find somebody who is more interested and better qualified? Is there a vehicle? Or are they in there for four years and into discussion?
They are appointed for a term of four years, but I think you could write the ordinance and provide for removal. Since they were appointed by the full commission, I think the removal would have to be done by the full commission as well.
Well, that's a harsh word.
Yeah. I'm open to suggestions, that's another word.
Commissioner Philbrook.
I think there does need to be a vehicle for that because there are sometimes people that have wonderful intentions to do great things, but things happen and then they can't fulfill on these committees. And then you're left with dead airspace.
But you can resign, of course. A board member could resign.
And, okay, that's nice, but I still think there needs to be another vehicle because not everybody's willing to resign. Sometimes it looks good on a resume. And that's all I had to say on that particular subject. So if we were to have a staff person as a liaison for each one of these committees, then I don't see why there'd be a big problem with staff putting forth information on each of the meetings to all of the commissioners so we can see what's going on. I mean.
The copy of the minutes.
Yeah, or a copy of the minutes.
The minutes are supposed to be filed with the clerk and I think you could direct the clerk to provide those to the commission.
Distribute those to each commissioner.
Yeah, but make that an autopilot thing.
Sure, I think that would be inherent if you've got a staff person.
You would, you would hope.
If you don't have, well, yeah.
You would hope, but I don't like to take anything for granted. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Jody, I, I think there is currently a provision in our boards and commissions that allows for forfeiture.
For three unexcused absences.
So you have a vehicle for removing someone already.
It's not a removal, it's automatic forfeiture.
Yeah.
So, because the commission at that time did not want it to come back to them.
Okay.
And say, you're out. It's just automatic if you have three unexcused absences.
You're out.
And really, they, they're not unexcused so much as just you didn't notify the chair in advance.
And the, the.
But it does happen.
Yeah. The other piece that I would hope you shared with the commission is this notion of advisory. What, many of our boards and commissions are advisory in nature and a lot of our boards and commissions aren't quite sure what that means. I mean, do they take the advice when they come and present? Do they have an impact? And I know that's a discussion I've had on several of the boards and commissions that I staff.
In the authorizing or enabling legislation, you, most of the time, the purpose is spelled out of the committee and so that's kind of their mission. But they don't know, they don't have a vehicle for bringing back their advice to the commission.
Commissioner Wa, Walker.
I missed part of the discussion, but my view is I appoint people because I have confidence in their independent judgment. I don't always agree with that. And I have on a number of occasions voted contrary to how my appointee voted at whatever the, the issue might have been. I don't want, I'm not going to appoint people that vote the way I want them to vote. I'm not calling them and saying, vote, vote for this. So that's my view of how I appoint people. I want to hear what they have to say after hearing the evidence.
So in, putting that in the context, is that, because there was, part of the discussion I think you, you weren't here for was the idea of removal. If you wanted to remove someone, if the commissioner who nominated them wanted to remove them for any reason during their term, the, part of the question is, would we have that provision in there? Or if we called it a nicer word, Walters was, thought removal was strong, an updating.
Yeah.
Is there a?
I would only support removal for cause. And we would have to define cause, you know, criminal behavior, bribery, whatever it might be. The fact that they disagreed with how I would have voted should not be cause for removal.
Okay. In terms of next steps, it sound, yes?
Well, I was just going to say, Mr. Connor referenced sort of a staff initiative that's ongoing as far as kind of talking to these board representatives and figuring out what they're doing. I'm wondering how close that is to completion because that would be great information to have if we're going to decide to combine some of these, to know whether they're meeting regularly, what they're doing, whether what they're doing might work well with what another board is doing.
It can certainly be ready by the next round of standing committees, if you want to bring it back to a standing, I mean.
Do we want to bring it back to standing? Do we want to bring it back to special session?
Thank you, Mayor. I think standing committee is a great place for this, this type of work session, for it to be vetted by half the commission, that standing committee come up with some ideas and bring something forth for approval or disapproval.
She just says that because she knows it's coming to my standing committee.
And I would recommend Commissioner Markley's standing committee.
Administration and Human Services, is that the correct standing committee?
Yes, yeah, that would be good. I'd make that motion.
So if we, yes, Commissioner.
Can I add to my comment? If you appoint somebody that is just going to be a rubber stamp of what you want, then why don't we eliminate the committees and just do the work ourselves? I don't understand, you, you know, I try to appoint people that are capable and independent-minded. I'm sure that my fellow commissioners do. And in the course of human events, that will necessarily have disagreements in what the right answer is. But if we're just going to remove somebody because they voted for something and we're against it, then get rid of the committee. It's just a useless appendage that we don't, we don't need.
All right. Well, and I think Commissioner Walker is on this committee.
Which committee?
The Administration and Human Services Standing Committee.
Well, you know I am because you put me there.
Just recalling for the rest of the commission. And I just want to say he is thrilled with his appointment.
Yeah, I am thrilled with being on that committee.
Commissioner Maddox.
No, I just, I just wanted to say, and, and I take Commissioner Walker's comments with value. But, but I think it's just not about not being content or supportive of the person that's in your place appointed. I think it's more so about for people who may be coming in office and they may want to put another person in that place who may still have two years and that appoint, that current appointee may not see eye to eye with the new elected official. So to still have that provision in place in, in a just cause matter, in my opinion, would, would still be important to have.
Looking back on my past life, the idea of staggered was to ensure a continuity of people rather than every time that a new commissioner gets elected, you had a new appointee. Someone green, someone inexperienced, someone who had no past historical context in which to evaluate. Now, maybe that's wrong. I would think that there are, I mean, I have a few that are serving at, at the appointment of my predecessor. When the time comes, I may reappoint or I may pick someone new. Depends on how they perform. I mean, the primary consideration should be whether they work at the job, they attend the meetings, and they make a considered evaluation, in my opinion. Now, clearly, there are those that are scheduled for reappointment. But I'm not sure that anything the committees do necessarily obligates me to follow that recommendation if I disagree. I mean, these, these are people, I, I guess I look at it like, these are people out of our community who have stepped forward, committed time and effort, most of which without any compensation, and we're going to boot them because somebody new gets elected. And that leaves a bad taste in people's mouth. And frankly, as a, well, I'm not newly elected now, but when I was newly elected, there were a lot of people, I couldn't have filled all those positions. I mean, there just simply weren't people who were willing to step forward and do the work for no compensation. That's, that is a big factor. And we're not willing to pay them for most of these committees, so the final decision rests with us, so we always have the, the, the king's X to overrule them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we have, we are asking Mr. Connor to continue to follow up on this, to track down each of the chairpersons, find out what kind of work is being done. I think that speaks to the issue that we already don't know. Right? I think that answers about 80% of our question, that we don't know how the majority of our boards and commissions are functioning. So that's number one, that's problem one. You're going to find that information out and bring it back to Standing Committee, Administration and Human Services Standing Committee, and ask the question of that committee now about what these do. And that committee is going to give their best input about which ones they think maybe we don't need anymore, could be combined. Or maybe there's some work that needs to be done, heaven forbid that a new committee needs to be formed instead of one of these. And I'm just saying, maybe. I, I'm not, I, I don't have an issue, I'm not advocating one. But I think if we had, if that committee come, if that standing committee of the, of the commissioners comes back with the information from Mr. Connor, you all can evaluate and then take the recommendations that have been recommended today by staff with this dialogue. We can finish this di, you all can finish this dialogue in terms of how you want to see it shaped and bring a recommendation to the whole commission. I think that would be a great process moving forward.
So being on that committee, are we going to get that information a little bit ahead of time so we can have time to do some reading, so we can ask you questions? Educated questions?
Sure. And I, I think what I'd like to add to that list is that, this, these are all the, the boards and committees that affect you as a group most of the time. There are other committees we didn't list here, we want to bring those back to the Standing Committee as well.
Sure you do.
The list will be longer.
It'll be, it'll be a larger list, but, but the goal is still the same.
Thank you, I felt that.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, sir. And can I request a more detailed description of every board that we have to appoint someone to? I know when we go to appoint someone, it comes with a little, maybe seven to 10 line description, but just, just a little bit more to know, you know, that, that's important to me.
Well, and I think that's part of the concern, I think that's all we have to go on. I don't think there is more. I'm not saying there shouldn't be more, I'm saying I don't think there is more.
Well, the problem is with us because we define the ordinance and the ordinance is seven or 10, 10 lines long.
That's right.
And so there is a vacuum of our, on our part, if we want them to do more or specifically define those duties, we need to redefine those ordinances.
That's right.
It's not that there isn't a description, the description is pretty vague because most of the time, the commission hadn't known what, what to do.
Yeah. Commissioner Maddox, we can certainly provide that kind of information because we're preparing a more detailed report, but just for tonight, this is all we had ready, so we can certainly provide that to you.
And I would hope what would come out of that recommendation also would be a, a vehicle for regular reporting back to every commissioner, whether it's the minutes or a report on a regular basis, whether the committee decides every, if they meet every month, we want the minutes every month, or do we want a quarterly report, at least an annual report? I don't think I've ever seen an annual report for any of these committees. So we need to define, how much information do we want? I'm not sure I want every monthly meeting minutes for 17 different boards. I think at least an annual report from each of the boards. I'd like to have, I mean, it'd be nice if the website had access to the minutes of each board so we could look at it if we wanted to. That should be out there for the public to look at. But anyway, if you could think of recommendations on a vehicle for reporting, I think that would be helpful.
We can do that, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just don't read them if you don't want to.
Just don't read them?
Just don't read them.
Well, I think there's information overload too. I mean, I think.
We, we all pick and choose.
No, I think that's right. Okay. Anything else on this? Mr. Walters, is this in keeping with your desire?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Thank you. He said I'm happy. I'd like the record to show that Commissioner Walters is happy. All right. Thank you, Mr. Connor, well done.
Thank you.
We will now prepare, we'll take a few minutes to get set up for our next meeting. We have a new group coming forward for, but first, we're going to pass out popcorn.
Thank you.
Look at that.
You guys deserve it.
Thank you.
You spend a lot of fosh.
I don't know if I have to give it, but I appreciate it.
So can you imagine how all of us are just having popcorn in these microphones?
That's right, just chomp on. Now we're going to both crunching in our microphones.
Exactly. Yeah, there was static, I couldn't hear anything they said. Run out.
All right, we have, our next topic is code enforcement. And just for the benefit of the commission, the way we're going to, my, my vision for this is a bit of a 101 presentation on who code enforcement is, what it does and what it does not do. Much of this, the commission already knows, but there are also people in our community who are not aware of this. So I think this is a good opportunity, not only to educate or really remind the commission, but really to help educate our public in terms of how code enforcement, there are, code enforcement probably has.
You guys have it.
As many misconceptions about it as it does ideas that are accurate. So if we can utilize this time for a presentation, I've asked for a presentation that's going to give us an overview and the public an overview, and then we can start our discussion after that. So I wanted to give it, I wanted to have that foundation before we move forward. So if some of this sounds like something you've already heard, be patient, I wanted to make sure our public gets a chance to hear this as well. And I'll ask Mr. Criswell to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted the commission to, well, actually, I wanted to extend a, a note of thanks to Greg and his team. I actually asked Greg to invite all of his management team to this special session tonight. Many of them don't specifically work in the code enforcement division, but because they're all part of the same team out there, I, I wanted them to know that we appreciate your work and that we really need your help in trying to figure out how we can deliver code enforcement services better. So thank you for taking your time, those of you who aren't specifically working in code enforcement to attend tonight. Any of your creative ideas and thoughts, please share with, with Greg as we try to figure out how we deliver code enforcement services through Neighborhood Resources better and more efficiently. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Talkin, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. Thank you for this opportunity. What I wanted to do, first of all, I wanted to lead off with an overall structure where code enforcement sits. Code enforcement is one of many divisions out at the Neighborhood Resource Center. And through this process, I'm going to briefly, I'd like to talk just a couple sentences of what each division does, and I also want to introduce that divisional manager. We will start off, at least in introductions, with the code enforcement division. In that division, of course, we are, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the mission of that one, so I won't touch on that yet, but that's further in the presentation. But Wayne is to my right here, and I appreciate his help on this presentation and everything he does. Second, we have building, Building License Division, which that's, sorry, that is a typo, it's Business License Division, I just caught that. With that, Philip Henderson is, is here, he is the license administrator. His office's daily activities involve collection of occupational taxes, and I call that registration of businesses also. And then additionally, he assists PD, Fire Department, and some other divisions throughout the UG through licensing and permitting. For instance, fireworks stands, some of the alcohol permitting that goes on for bars and taverns and things of that nature. Then we have building inspection. Behind me, I have Anthony Hutchinson, who is the chief building inspector. His office is charged daily duties with reviewing of plans, doing inspections, issuing permits, trying to make sure the as-built world is safe for everything we do, for where we work, live and play. Then we have the rental licensing division. Debbie Graber is the program coordinator for that division. Debbie is, his, her office is probably one of the primary partners with code enforcement. They are battling some of the same stuff. Her office does, has two components. One is licensing of rental property and inspection of rental property. Demolition and abatement, Erin Downing. Erin is new to the management team, she's been on board for about three months now and has come a long way and is doing a great job of managing the everyday tasks and the, and the workflow of the demolition properties. And then we have Little Neighborhoods Division. Right now, we have an acting program coordinator for that, Andrea Genero. We hope to fill that position very soon. I think everybody pretty much knows Little Neighborhoods, they support neighborhood groups, do newsletters, flyers, coordinate a number of meetings, and try to find resources for neighborhood groups and general citizens. And I guess I should have started off by leading that all of this falls underneath Gordon, well, it falls underneath me and I fall underneath Gordon, which Gordon is new to this. Gordon's been, I think, in that role about a month now.
Yeah.
You look shell shocked with that.
Okay. Now, let's get into the code enforcement structure. Once again, the program coordinator is Wayne Wilson, he was what I consider the division head of the code enforcement. Underneath Wayne, I did want to introduce two additional people, Rachel Miskick, who's sitting a little bit further back, and Rob Morgan, they are inspection supervisors. They help oversee the daily operations and support field staff. And when the field staff is absent, they take the role of field staff. And when the field staff is absent, they take the role of field staff to fill in the gaps. And then underneath each of those, there's an inspector specialist. The inspector specialists, they have two underneath each one. They are, they are code enforcement officers. They have an area. The one additional function they have is their pod leaders. The other inspectors underneath them are to go to them to get assistance, training, things of that nature on daily, daily tasks that they may have questions about. Over to the right, we have four clerical administrative positions. Half of one of those positions supports the demolition coordinator, and one of those positions supports the overall NRC budget and finance. General Code Enforcement Mission Statement. To enhance the level of public safety and city aesthetics through public education of minimal housing and property maintenance standards, environmental regulations and applicable zoning for both residential and commercial buildings, to effectively enforce these standards and regulations when voluntary compliance fails and ensure due process throughout our efforts. Now, we can't do, do the job alone. Code enforcement involves a lot of directions, a lot of collecting of information, a lot of partnerships. I've mentioned all the other divisions of the NRC. They are all true partners for what we do on a daily basis in the code enforcement office. Once again, I would say that rental and livable neighborhoods are probably two of them that get more involved in the code enforcement efforts on a daily basis. Legal Department, key, especially as we're trying to move forward and find new avenues to try to, to enforce some of these rules and regulations and hold people accountable. Community policing, I did want to take a moment. We have Captain Greg Lawson, who is serving as a surgeon in arms tonight. His unit is probably almost our right hand in code enforcement. There's a number of factors with community policing today that is important for the code enforcement effort. Safety is a big concern in a number of instances, not always, but also they're out and among the community groups more than the neighborhood, more than our staff is. And so, they bring back and they help us troubleshoot and bring resources together to solve neighborhood problems, and a lot of those are code enforcement issues. Public Works, Public Works is very important because they, they house the abatement teams that were initiated back in 2007, 2008. Municipal Court, of course, they are truly a very important partner for those that are more hard-headed and don't want to comply or won't. We try to get those individuals into the court process. Neighborhood Groups, Neighborhood Groups helps us tremendously. They get information out, they help do things that we can't do. They also come up with resources to help people in their community that need help and coordinate a lot of activities that supports everything we do. NBRs, same thing, just a little bit of a higher level. Health Department, we run across a number of issues that are outside our expertise or outside our ordinances, but are similar in nature. For instance, you know, mosquitoes and insects that are dangerous, you know, they have programs for that. A couple of the items that we continually work on, we haven't found answers for, are bedbugs and mold, but usually, at least the mold, there's other causes that create the mold that we can address. Community Development, it's mainly funding, and of course, they are the funding arm for a lot of the demolition that occurs and a number of other partnerships that we have. The Delinquent Tax Office is one that continues to seem to increase in our role in trying to assist us. We'll talk a little bit more about that later, but we are trying to get more properties to them that are in, in arrears in taxes as an avenue when we can't find somebody to hopefully get investment in that property and under new ownership. Area Agency on Aging, Planning and Zoning. Of course, our staff, code enforcement staff is responsible for enforcing some of those zoning regulations. Number of Volunteer Committees and numerous others to mention. This is basically operating expenditures for the code enforcement division from 2006 through the 2015 approved budget. For the most part, I think it's remained flat. The governing body did approve two additional positions in 2013. That would, I think, reflect the, a little bit of a bump up in that area. Full-time equivalents, full-time positions that we've had from 2006 through 2015. I want to make one note, it's on the chart there. There is one position in this FTE count that is, originally, when hired, was in the, it was in the Livable Neighborhoods office, but it was for support of both Livable Neighborhoods and Code Enforcement. It was a neighborhood liaison that helped try to find resources and help some of the disputes and things going on for those that can't afford repairs and visited with neighborhoods and tried to resolve a number of issues for us. Through the loss of staff in that office, that really, that one position is the Acting Livable Neighborhoods Director at this time, and we also lost another position that's unfunded in that area. So, that FTE, one FTE is basically a Livable Neighborhoods employee, not a code enforcement staff. That's throughout. It started in 2006 when we hired that employee, so it is included from there on. So, one thing I want to note also in this graph, we all know that we've been through a lot of difficult times, so even though it shows an FTE up there, a lot of FTEs, although were funded, we were not allowed to fill through hiring freezes for an extended period of time, so they are still reflected up there. But right now, we're at the highest level we've been, of course, in, in nine, in nine years, so. That, I'm gonna turn it over to Wayne.
This is a map of the-
Can you pull that mic right up to you, please?
This is a map of the districts in Wyandotte County. It's basically set up on police districts. There are 18 police districts in the community, and we have 13, or, I'm sorry, we have 15 code enforcement assignments to those districts. Notice in 222, 223, and 224, and also in 225, those are assigned to inspectors where they have multiple districts. That's because the denseness of the population doesn't warrant there to be separate inspectors for that area. The 225 is the Legends Race Track area, and there's not a lot of code enforcement issues in that particular area.
Can I point out also, this does not include Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, that our code enforcement is a city function, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Also, we have our two new employees that we just hired and are going through their training process right now. Patrick Holton and Cheryl Martel have been assigned to the Armoredale and Rose, or Argentine and Rosedale area in 335 and 332.
Thank you.
This graph from 2006 to, through July 31st of this year represents the number of code enforcement cases, the amount of inspections tied to those cases, and the percentage of those cases that actually went to court. Mayor asked that I would change the order on this, and I apologize, Mayor, I was not able to-
That's okay.
-get that switched around.
That's okay.
So, in 2013, we had 33,169 inspections based on 12,139 cases, and of those 12,139 cases, only 1,015 of those went to court. The rest of those cases, we had compliance through voluntary compliance.
Commissioner Walker.
You may have just answered it. Are you telling me that we resolved 33,169 cases by the property being brought up to code?
Yes, sir.
No, well, hold on. We need to make sure, this is some question I had. The total number of cases are the, are the calls that we get that someone says something's wrong. So, in 13, we had 12,000 such calls. But those, no, no, those are, the 33,000 number is the number of inspections. So, if you look at that, the green is, that's why I wanted the order different. The number of inspections is the tall number, the green, 33,000. So, what that means is, when a code call comes in, they send out someone to inspect to see if there's really a violation. Then they give them a notice, and they come back and inspect it again. Best-case scenario, there's only two inspections for every code, for every case. But worst-case scenario, you could have multiple inspections for every case, particularly if it goes to court. If it goes to court, you get 15 inspections before it's resolved. So, 12,000 cases, it averages about two and a half to three inspections per case. So, we resolve, to your point, Commissioner, of the 12,000 cases, 11,000 are resolved through voluntary compliance. 90%.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Is that, is-
Mayor, you'll find further in these slides, we backed that up a little bit to 85%. The only reason we did that, there was a couple of cases we discussed after this. We do have a few cases that are out there that we know they're elderly, things of that nature. We're out there trying to find resources. Until we find them, we won't bring those individuals to court. Those are hanging out there in the case numbers, but that some of them have not been issued. There's a few cases like that.
That's good, that's a good clarification.
Okay, I, I'm not sure I still understand. So, I'm just gonna take one year, let's look at 2006. It says there were 29,000 approximately number of inspections. Accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, we went out and inspected 29,000 code cases. As a result of those 29,000-
No, we did 29,000 inspections on 13,000 code cases. Some of the cases have multiple inspections.
Now, it is possible we did inspections that did not result in a case. Like, somebody calls and you go out and look at it and say, well, there's nothing wrong there. Correct.
So, are these just code violations, or are these also rental inspection, building inspection?
These are only code cases.
So, these are code cases that people have called in with concerns, or you have gotten somehow a concern, and 13,000 of the 29,000 in 2006 required an, an inspection?
No, no, I think this is, this is the confusing part of this. There were 13,000 calls for code violations. 13,000 code violations were called in. In order to address those 13,000 codes, it took 29,000 inspections. So, every, so about two and a half inspections per violation because there are more inspections than there are violations. Because you get an initial one, and then you get a follow-up one to see if it's resolved. If it goes to court, they could inspect that rascal five times. So, there are gonna be more inspections than there are code cases.
Got it.
It's complicated, isn't it?
I got it now, though.
Yeah.
The green number really means very little. What, what really matters is 13,000 code violations, and of that, 1,691 went to court.
That's right. It does show that, that's, that's exactly right. We're just racking up, the green shows how many miles we're running.
Thank you.
And we will show additional slides in a little bit that show some of the simple processes that might kind of help explain that number of inspections per case.
Thank you.
When we go out to inspect a property, the, there can be numerous violations on the property or they can be a simple violation. Our first attempt is to make contact with the responsible party or the owner of the property, the resident of the property, and let them know, advise them of what violations are present on the property, and discuss those issues with them. A lot of times, we'll run into situations where there are barriers that prevent us from getting compliance on that property. The number one that most people are aware of is the unwillingness to do so. Either because we're the government and we can't tell them what to do, we have no business on their property, or they don't care what the consequences are, they're not going to correct it. Some of the other barriers, though, are economic barriers for those individuals. Sometimes their decision that they need to make is, do they put paint on their house or do they pay for medicines and groceries for their family? Sometimes there are physical limitations that, these often come with elderly residents as well as residents that, that have disabilities or are injured in some manner. Physical disabilities and, and injuries, and there are those individuals that we speak to that have mental disabilities. We also have issues with who is the actual owner of the property, who's the responsible party. A lot of times, this comes from mortgage companies that will, they'll tell the individual that they're foreclosing on the property. When that individual gets that information, they vacate the property. They think that they're, they're finished, and they leave. Mortgage company will come out to the property and find that it is not in the condition they want it to be, and they'll write it off. They don't have an address or contact information to notify the owners since they've left, and so, we're left with a property that someone owns that they don't know that they own and have left the vicinity or possibly even the city. We also run into issues with UG resources. When we're doing abatements, currently at this time, we're, Public Works is several weeks behind on doing trash and weed abatements because of the number that had come in during this time of year. Their team is rolling all the time. They do 10, 15, 20 abatements every day through the summer, and they're continuing to try to, to keep up with those.
Commissioner Walker.
This ownership and responsible party is a, a much bigger issue than most of the others. I have a problem at 3009 Parkwood. Not my district, but, well, I guess it is, I'm at large. We have an owner that lives in Bonner Springs. They've abandoned the property. They won't do any repairs. A California mortgage company owns, holds the mortgage, but will not foreclose because they do not want to do the repairs. We need to have legal investigate our ability by ordinance to establish a requirement that we go af, that we either go after them civilly or and/or in municipal court when they hold the mortgage and the owner has abandoned. We have to, we have to do something because there are thousands of properties. I mean, there may be others that are, those factors are, are real, but that ownership responsible party is a mortgage holder. They don't want to do anything, and they're not gonna put any more good money after bad. And we need something that gives us a tool legally to hail them into Wyandotte County Court.
Well, and I will say this, and I've said this repeatedly, there are, and this is true of our tax delinquency. There are really two bags of tax delinquency. There's the one where we have struggling people financially who are trying to decide between paying their tax bill and paying their utilities, paying their food bill. And we need to be nurturing and caring and set up a plan with them and work with those people. But that's the smallest percentage. The vast majority of our tax delinquency are absentee landlords who don't care about our city. The same is true on code violations. There are people, elderly people, economically disadvantaged folks, people with physical, mental disabilities who just would love to live in a nicer home and would love to invest in their property to make it look better, but struggle to do so. We have to find them resources. The vast majority of our code violations are, Commissioner, to your point, are exactly this group of absentee landlords who don't care about our city and don't care about their properties. And that's the much harder group because when we have a 90% compliance rate, that tells me people in Wyandotte County want to take care of their properties. People who live there, we get them a notice, 90% of them get fixed without ever going to court. 85% get fixed without ever going to court, and we have another group that we're working with because they're struggling. It's this, this, the nemesis of our community is this handful of people who will not do what they need to do to take care of their property primarily because they're not anywhere to be found. So, I think you're exactly right. This is, as we get into this, this is the sticky wicket. And I think the Commissioners Markley and McKeonan, I'm gonna call on you at the end of this presentation because they're actually working on some solutions for some of these very issues. So, continue on.
When the code enforcement officer goes out and visits with the resident of that property, when we talk to them, we have to decide if the story that they're giving us is the truth or if they're just stringing us along. And a lot of times, we don't know the answer to that question until after we've dealt with them for a while. We, at, at some point, we almost turn into social workers where we're trying to establish what problems that they- We, at, at some point, we almost turn into social workers, where we're trying to establish what problems that they have, what means of support we can offer them through the volunteer agencies and, and assistance that's available, and offer suggestions for them to seek out some of those resources. There is a very limited amount of resources available. We try to get assistance for any of those people that we can. We run into issues where we have hoarding houses that are severely dilapidated on the interior. Not necess, you wouldn't necessarily know it from the outside. We have, we've had individuals that have hoarded animals. The interior of the property is, is so toxic with animal waste, that you can smell it from the street, out in front of the property. Those individuals, we try to get to Wyandotte Mental Health, uh, the Adult Protective Services, and find assistance for them. The bottom line is, the residents can only get help if they're willing to take it, unless they're at a capacity where it's mandated. We can, we can do everything that we possibly can to try to assist these folks, to encourage them, to, to help them, give them a break, give them continuances, they get some work done, they stay in contact with us, we move along. But there's, at some point, the property is either corrected, or they, they give up, they quit trying, they quit communicating with us, and at that point, then we have to go to court. In a perfect world, this would be how code enforcement cases took place. We get a complaint, either from someone calling in, or the inspector notices it when they're out. They do an inspection, they find that there are violations. They notice the responsible party with what the violations are. We set a reinspection, we go back out to reinspect it, all those violations have been corrected, and we close our case.
I like the heart graphic when it, the case is closed. Everybody ha, is happy.
I like that one too.
This is more what our everyday life is like.
I would like to suggest that maybe we make that on two different grounds.
That's coming from the eye doctor.
It's actually not intended for you to be able to read Commissioner.
Oh, thank you.
This is, the, the little scenario that, that we discussed before is that little box that ends right up there on top. The rest of that are issues where we take people to court, they don't have the work done. The work is, the judge continues it, they come back into court, the work is still not done, the judge continues it again, judge imposes fines. We do everything that we possibly can to get these people to complete what needs to be done, so that we can get the property corrected. The, at the very end, you can take that person's money, you can put them in jail, you can seize their property. But if they choose not to correct the violations, there isn't a lot we can do, other than the few abatements that we have.
Philbrook and then Walker.
I'm gonna ask that you do actually, when you send us a copy of this presentation, that you rework that particular sheet to a manner in which we can actually see it when we print it out. Yeah, that's easy for you to say. But yeah, 'cause I'm gonna print it out, I work better on paper.
You can't read it, Doc?
Can I, can I walk forward? You're way bad, I'll talk to you later.
Commissioner Walker?
Uh, I guess my question is for Judge Nichols. How many continuances do you allow on a, on a case?
Please speak directly into the microphone, I do want to introduce Judge Nichols, one of our municipal court judges, and you have the code enforcement docket?
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, I have tried to, in a perfect world again, um, the first appearance, which forty to forty-two percent actually are fined on their first appearance, they come in and they're done. I allow one continuance to get work done without much lecturing. The second time, um, if there's no work done, depends on the situation, they get a pretty good lecture. Some of them that are already in, um, that have done absolutely nothing, we gotta get, I do a target. Like, okay, well, what you have to have done before you come back to court is all the trash and all the weeds. We'll talk about the rest of it after that. By the third continuance, I'm threatening a maximum fine, and by the fourth, I'm imposing it. So those are our hardcore, um, and then what, and maybe Greg has it later, our average length to fine is thirteen to sixteen weeks, so that's about that four-month time period. So I'm not, I try to, try to weigh if we're working on what, if it's trash and weeds and they have it all done, and they can't afford to do a roof, I'm a little more understanding. But if trash and weeds aren't getting done, they're not getting very many continuances, maybe one.
Thank you.
All right, continue. I'd like to introduce Colin Welch of our legal department, who has the privilege of working on these.
So, uh, in tandem with the complex unprimrose path to court, one other tool that we have is the abatement. When an individual that should be responsible, responsible for the property becomes irresponsible, and fails to remedy certain violations, then the UG may act to correct them, and that's what we call an abatement. So this would be, and that, that option's only available in, uh, when it involves grass, weeds, um, inoperable cars, the boarding of, of unsecure property, and trash. So the steps are, violation is found, notification placard is, is placed in a, hopefully, visible area of the property. Then if it's remedied, and I'm sorry, along with that notice and order of abatement, the individual is given a deadline at which it needs to be abated before we take action. So if on reinspection, the violation is remedied, then the case is closed, and that's great. But if the violation still exists upon reinspection, then Public Works is going to abate the weeds, grass, and/or trash. We have private contractors that we go to in the case of inoperable vehicles, or properties that are, are open. After the work's done, an invoice is sent, and by certified and regular mail. And then if the payment is not made within thirty days, then we do place a lien on the property.
Commissioner Walker?
So, my fellow Commissioners are, are clear. When we put a lien on a property, that lien is secondary to any pre-existing mortgages, correct?
Yes, yes sir, I'm sorry.
So, when the primary mortgage holder forecloses on their lien, ours is extinguished?
Um, yes, unless by some miraculous happening, there's enough money.
Do you have any idea how much we have been paid on liens we have filed for these kinds of abatements over the last few years?
I do not.
Would it be fair to say about zero?
Commissioner, from my understanding, all, all of our liens and specials are lumped into one sum. They're not broken down once they're placed on the property.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, do you know if we've ever collected a lien for these kinds of abatements?
I, I do know we have collected some, but not very much. Some of those have contacted us, some of them have been mortgage companies that actually did own the property at the time we did it, but they were unaware they owned it, and they did, they have, several mortgage companies have paid, but still, it's a very small permit.
I think the point is, is that this idea that where we go on property and abate lien, nuisances or trash, weeds, whatever, and we put a lien on a property, is probably in the high nineties percent-wise, in terms of collection. It is an exercise in futility, because we never get very much money out of the work we do. So, the idea that we're gonna put a lien on a piece of property, if any of you feel that is somehow compensating us.
We should take no comfort in the lien.
We should take no comfort in the lien, because we're usually several, several layers behind the, and in order to protect our lien, we've gotta buy out the primary mortgage holder. And we're not gonna buy out the primary mortgage holder.
McKernan?
Commissioner Walker has just hit on one thing that is a real sore spot with me, because a lot of these properties, we don't just abate them once, we abate them multiple times. And let's be clear, we divert Public Works from doing other things that they could be doing to go abate a property where someone no longer cares enough to do it themselves. And so we're not only missing a little bit of money, on some of these properties, we're missing a lot of money, because we're continually abating them. So, in my, in my perfect world, we find a better solution to stop that process, so that we can get that property out of the hands of whoever it is that chooses not to take care of it, and makes us abate it multiple times, and puts it in the hand of someone who's going to actually care for the property, and make it a productive part of the neighborhood. Because until we do that, we're spending tax money to cut grass and pick up after people who either aren't in our community any longer, or just choose not to do it. And that's very dissatisfying for me.
Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. I just wanna know, when we put a lien on a property, and we already heard that the percentages are not good of collecting on that lien, what, what happens to the average property after the lien has been placed on it?
There, there is a small advantage to that lien beyond that not getting paid, at least I believe there is. And that would be that somebody may be paying the marginal taxes, and they're not doing anything else. And as we start to collect and put those liens, they may give up, and therefore gets it eligible for a tax sale. That's, there's, I mean, there's two sides of that story. But, um, thing is, most don't pay. And I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you rephrase your question? I got off task there.
No, I just asked, since we put, when we put liens on properties, what is, after the process has taken its length, how, how many, what do we do when the people do not pay the lien, what happens to the property?
Same thing when they don't pay their taxes. It, it eventually will be probably dismissed through a tax sale, or something of that nature.
Okay.
I don't, I don't need to jump in, but the part that may be the gap that, now that I'm not sitting in there every day and listening to what you say, is that when the lien is not paid, it gets certified as a tax with the taxes. It becomes a special assessment. So our lien was secondary, but once it becomes a special assessment, it becomes a tax, just like all the other taxes. And if they choose, so, some of these mortgage companies, like my mortgage is set up, they're paying my taxes, and I'm paying them back. We're getting paid back for those, but our real big problems aren't with mortgages that are set up that way. Our big problems have nothing to do with that. But that is where the gap from the, the taxes to the lien goes, is that, I'm sorry.
Walker and then, um, Murgia.
The biggest problem...
Hold on, hold on, Maddox wasn't done, sorry.
And, and I just wanted to say that, because when I think about where the majority of homes are being torn down in our community, I think about the first district, followed by the fourth district. And many of the people, I hear from them, they feel like they've been pushed out of their homes by a process. And so that's a concern to me, because many of the people that live in my community, they don't have a lot of finance, they don't have a lot of money. So, while I appreciate learning about the abatement process, and all the different options that they may have, that's just a concern for me, to be, to get a better understanding. And I think it's also a concern to citizens to better understand the process that they're faced with before they properly, before they possibly lose their home. So that's a concern for me, because, again, the majority of homes are being torn, torn down in the first and fourth district, which is the urban core. And many of those people, again, just don't have the funds and finances to put everything in place in a timely manner that's being given to them. And so, at the end of the day, I'm just, I'm glad to be able to understand this process, and I probably need to come down and, and maybe meet with you in a personal session, understand it better, so I can be able to pass it on to some of the residents. But this is just a concern, because again, the community I grew up in as a little boy, every block, no homes, no homes. And I'm, and I'm thinking maybe in ten, fifteen years, I would love to ask you, what do you, what would the communities look like? But I'm not gonna ask it. But, but I'd like to be able to say that we gave some people a fair chance at keeping their homes, versus just railroading them and cutting them down.
I'd be, be happy to meet with you Commissioner. Just to note real quick, there are probably three or four processes that even happen before it gets to the demolition process. And it's a whole separate due process. And I would have to say that when we get to that process, ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of them homes are not occupied at that point. When we get to demo, I'm not saying they aren't in some of the earlier processes, but yeah, I'd, we're happy to talk about that.
Okay, we have Walker, Murgia, and McKernan.
Couple of things. Judge Nichols is correct, it becomes part of the taxes. But if we're out there cutting the grass, it's because they're not paying the taxes anyway. So, it becomes a matter of us foreclosing on it. So, we're doing work on property, putting a lien on a piece of property. All of that involves the expenditure of, uh, uh, resources within the UG, when in fact, they're not gonna pay the taxes anyway. Now, there are some mortgage companies that do pay the taxes, because there is a piece of property that potentially has resale value. By the time someone, and Commissioner Maddox, by the time someone has not paid their taxes for three years, has not gone to the courthouse to get on a payment plan, and has done nothing to protect the homestead, I think it's very fair to say that it is more than, either there is in a case of extreme poverty, in which they should not be in that house anyway, or they have no intention of paying the taxes, that they're running out the timeline, which is three years. You know, it's nice to know, and everyone should know, that you don't pay your taxes, you got three years. Depending on how long you've been in your house, once they foreclose on you, you got the right of redemption for a period of time specified by the number of years. You can live two to three, even longer, in a house, and pay no mortgage, pay no rent, pay no taxes, and nobody can get you out of it. Now, anyone who is in that situation, in my opinion, we live in a real world, they should step forward. They should go to the courthouse, they should meet with the judge, there is a process. They should agree to pay something on their taxes. Those kinds of people I would not foreclose on. The people that just simply don't pay their taxes and claim poverty, I mean, what else are you gonna do? Every person who does not pay taxes means that everyone who does pay taxes pays higher taxes to make up the needs of the government. So, having said that, I'll, thank you Mayor.
Commissioner, uh, Murgia and McKernan, I will note, it is six-thirty, we do have a seven o'clock, and we will need to adjourn from here at six-forty-five for transition time, not only for ourselves, but for our tech team. So, um, if we need to come back to this conversation, we will. And, and, let me rephrase that. We're coming back to this conversation, because we're not gonna resolve it tonight. But let's, let's go ahead and have Murgia and McKernan speak, and then I'm gonna ask them to finish their presentation, so we can get to the dialogue and maybe next steps.
Thank you Mayor, um, then I'm gonna go ahead and run several of my comments together. The first one, I'd like to be very clear, is that it is very interesting to hear about all the other departments, like rental licensing, building inspection, demolition. But I, um, my understanding was that I haven't heard, in the almost eight years I've been up here, a lot of issues with those departments. I haven't heard any complaints, let me be very clear, in regard to those departments. In fact, in my other life, as the executive director of a not-for-profit, I have a wonderful relationship with the demolition department and the rental licensing division. So, just so you're clear, from my perspective and that of District Three, I don't typically get complaints about those areas. I will tell you, I do get complaints, um, in regard to code enforcement. But I also want to be very clear, those complaints are not directed at any individual code officers out there doing their job. So, um, there may have been one in eight years, but, um, it's not an ongoing theme or a problem. So I wanted that cleared up first. Um, I won't ask my question, I'll save that for a different time. And, um, I actually, this, this issue, um, as a senior... And I actually, this issue, as a senior commissioner on this commission now, this has been going on, these concerns with code enforcement going on for a long time. I'm probably less patient with excuses and things than my peers. So, in order to get away from saying things I don't want to say, I prepared a written statement that I'm going to go ahead and read and provide to the clerk for the minutes so that people will be able to review it later on. So, first, Mayor, I do want to say publicly and formally, thank you very much for bringing this issue forward. I greatly appreciate it. Code enforcement is a way small problems are addressed before they become big problems. These kinds of violations are indicators that a neighborhood is in trouble. These violations threaten the quality of life, the health and the public safety of every neighborhood. As a senior commissioner who has served on this commission for almost eight years, I can tell you this issue has been the number-one concern of all the elected officials I have worked with to date. In addition, it was the number-one concern in a citizen survey conducted by the Argentine Neighborhood Development Association and the Rosedale Development Association in my district five years ago, and was the number-one concern of a recent survey conducted by the local unified government. This is a topic we all have agreed for almost a decade is a priority problem with our constituents. As a commissioner in leadership and oversight of the unified government, we all have a duty and an obligation to make sure the code enforcement department is doing the best job possible or to better understand why it is not meeting anyone's expectations. This question is not personal, it is professional and about accountability. I appreciate this is a difficult job with limited resources, but every department is coping with limited resources and this is no excuse for poor performance. I know this because I have provided alternatives that could increase the quality and quantity of code violations being handled by our staff without increasing our costs. It is obviously, some are more interested in excuses than results. I will repeat my recommendation again for the record. We need to look at creating part-time code enforcement positions. I will not get into the benefits of this for this meeting, but would expect to see a presentation from staff at least evaluating the option which I have presented on numerous occasions. In addition, we were promised over five years ago, a system, I believe, I've already forgotten, a system we've referred to as Maui, that would provide real-time, up-to-date status on code violations. Each commissioner was to have direct access through their computer so they could provide up-to-date feedback to constituents when they called in with a code concern. That has never happened. I believe this government spent a significant amount of tax dollars on that program. The failure to have this system up and running is a huge failure of current leadership. This must be fixed immediately. I therefore suggest that this system be up and running by November 1st this year or at the next available commission meeting. I will call for a vote of no confidence in this leadership. I also propose that no later than September 1st, this leadership team deliver to each commissioner a recommendation that will be immediately designed to increase the number of average code violations annually by at least 10%. Citations should be appropriate and not just driven to meet a quota. My comments tonight will be provided in writing to the clerk's office, and I will also be posting immediately following tonight's meeting, a copy of my comments to my political Facebook page for everyone's review. Again, Mayor, I thank you very much for putting this item on the agenda.
You're welcome. Okay, so we have about 10 more minutes. I would like to ask you all to complete your presentation tonight, and then if we have any time, we can talk about next steps.
Okay, so, we were talking about general processes, and the code enforcement processes, aside from being geared towards yielding compliance, are also tailored to comply with the requirements of due process. The legal concept of due process is, of course, enshrined in the United States Constitution and within the Kansas Bill of Rights, Section 18, which is in the likeness of the United States Constitution amendments. Due process, essentially, the government is prohibited from depriving one of life, liberty or property without due process. So, let's flesh that out. What is due process? In a nutshell, it's notice and an opportunity to be heard. Applying this to code enforcement actions, the legal perspective, as far as code enforcement is concerned, is that any action by code enforcement must be accompanied by, well, it must be reasonably calculated to fully apprise interested parties of the action and afford an opportunity to, I'm sorry, to orderly object or appeal that action. I apologize. Who's that? Just one second. There almost-
We have two slides left. Let me touch on some efforts that have been recently occurring and maybe some in the not-too-distant past. One of the customer surveys that has been referenced, the overall UG survey, one of the things that staff seen in that survey of a big concern was, the biggest items were trash, weeds and vehicles. A couple of things that we're trying to do differently, the cops office, community policing has been pushing us to look at a warning notice for vehicles. It would be a notice that would give them 48 hours to remedy an operable vehicle situation where they're parking in the yard, not tagged properly. And if they don't, of course, we would have to go back to our full process because we have to follow these processes because we are talking about people's property. However, we are in a trial period right now to find out the percentages that they can get compliance through that process. If they can get compliance in that process, which they believe can be in the 40% to 50% range, then we have just reduced a lot of time in trying to address some of those concerns. There's been a lot of talk about processes. We've talked about the abatement process, but we've also talked about the legal processes. One of the things that, because of the weeds and the trash, in trying to get that taken care of quicker, is we used to send a notice of violation first to go into that process, they didn't comply, we would issue an abatement notice, and somewhere in there, we would issue a summons. We are backing away from doing that notice of violation, we're sending an abatement notice first off, which gives them notice to cut the weeds. If they don't, we do. That effort is to hope to cut a couple of weeks off that timeframe of compliance or for us to get out there and take care of the issue so the citizens and the neighbors don't have to put up with it. Abandoned housing, we've talked about that. We are supporting Kansas housing law changes put on at the state level. As mentioned earlier, we're trying to refer those properties that are not demo criteria at that point when they become three years delinquent and hoping that they can go through the tax sale, and in that process, they will get into somebody's hands that cares. Home Repair Coalition, this is an effort by Little Neighborhoods, trying to combine all of those repair programs that are out there through all the not-for-profits and other agencies, trying to coordinate those better. We find situations a lot of time where something can't be done before the other thing's done. The house can't be painted before the roof's put on, and they only have fun for one or the other. Trying to, that's just gotten started, we're not too sure where that's going to go, but it's an effort to try to help those that are needy. Housing Task Force, that is something that was, I would have to say, was primarily driven by Commissioner McKeonan and his concerns. That has been ongoing for two years. A lot of the things we're talking about here are coming out of there, and there's a lot of other issues that are under discussion. Videos for tenant education on the website, that's more of a rental licensing issue for the most part or a human resources issue or human services issue, but all of the staff, the NRC gets dragged into that sometimes, and it's better to serve everybody and get those issues resolved. So, we've had some videos produced to help educate tenants, both of contracts, leasing, what they do when there's improper evictions going on and they're being evicted, things of that nature. Those will be on the website here within the next few weeks. Contract for deed brochure, that's been updated. Several parties were involved in that to try to stress and educate those people about some of the downfalls of the contract for deed, trying to protect those people that enter into those and don't understand that. Top 10 code violation brochure, that has just been updated. That is a tool for us to use to educate, trying to get information out to people that maybe you're just ignorant of the law, they don't understand it, and maybe they'll take care of the problem before we have to get involved. A lot of neighborhood groups distribute those, Little Neighborhoods distribute those, and so does our office. The abatement processes, that's not one of the newer ones, but is one. You know, I know there's a lot of issues with that, and it is costing the taxpayers money, but it also is serving the taxpayers by getting at least to a minimal level that those weeds cut, the house secured, maybe not repaired, and the trash picked up. And then the Good Neighbor Training is something we have not done for a while because we kind of saturated the market, but it was a way to educate a lot of our neighborhood leaders, even commissioners have attended, and to show the processes that we go through to understand and hopefully to reduce some of that frustration that takes place sometimes when they don't think anything at all's going on, when it's in court and it's been there for a while or it's, you know, code's is working the case. Other things we're looking at, we are looking at administrative fines process and process. I'm not going to touch a whole lot on that, it just would be a whole different process where we can administratively charge fines instead of judicially. Looking at other cities and states, we continue to do that, and other programs we can do. We're continuing to look into ways to educate, reach out to the right audience. We are looking at ways to gain efficiency with technology, which we just touched on. We are, we are, we did have our data, it was accessible on the website to any citizen if they had their case number. That has been there for probably the last four, five, six years. Since the update just occurred, that will be eligible for all citizens and even commissioners to access the website. I would say within the next month to, just, you can query an address at that point, you won't have to have the case number. That's what the update did for us. You will be able to look at, at a high level, not only codes cases, but building permits, OCH taxes that have been issued there, and rental licenses. You will also look at the number of the planning and zoning processes that are attached to that parcel. We are continuing to work and identify, trying to identify, at least starting off with one relevant, important performance measure with the data that we currently collect. And that's all we have.
All right. So, I want to thank you for your presentation and for your work. We have, we are going to need to continue this conversation because we need to go, but Commissioner Walker had asked to speak before we adjourned, so Commissioner, you have the floor.
Alls I want to say, and maybe Greg said this in part of what he's talking about, many years ago, when code enforcement went out and they saw a violation, they wrote a notice to appear and summons. That constitutes due process. Now, by the time you come to court, if you have your violation remediated, that can go into a sentencing factor, which back in the day usually meant that whatever the fine was, was suspended or probated. Anywhere where we're sending out letters to people to give them notice, that adds at least 30 days to the process. Now, we've heard the judge talk about continuances. You take a trash or a weed case, you get a notice and a letter to cut your grass. Well, okay, that means you've got anywhere from two to three more months before you actually have to do a thing. What we need to do is, when we send our code, this is efficiency, this is an economy. When our code enforcement agents go out and they see a violation, they write it up, and you get a notice to appear in court, and you start the process. How unaware in this world do you have to be to know that if you don't take care of that problem before you go to court, that you're going to be fined and found guilty? Any of these notice letters that we send out are a colossal waste of time and only postpone the agony of the neighbors who have to put up with it. If I had, I could tell you of case after case of people who did not cut their grass, owners who did not cut their grass, and by the time they finally got it cut, you're talking 90 days minimum to get them to cut the grass before the hammer came down in the courtroom. My thought would be, forget these written notice letters, write them up, put them in court, get them in the process, and if they take care of it before they come to court, then we take care of that on the back end with the judge, allowing the judge the discretion to, and the judges already have it, to not sentence them to some heavy fine or whatever they might impose as a sanction. Okay. That's my piece.
All right. We will need to-
I'm sorry, I just want one thing.
Judge Nichols.
I'm sorry. 2006, you'll notice there's 1,600 cases. Then this year, you'll notice, last year, you'll notice there's 800 cases. I just had this conversation with Judge Ryan in the quick time I had to prepare. Actually, not, there were like 963 of those 1,600 cases were actually dismissed for lack of service. Currently, we do not dismiss very many at all. So, those numbers may, just as you're looking at that presentation before the next one, I just want you to be advised, there has been a shift in how we do that. That's all.
Okay. So, we're going to need to come back to code violations because there's a lot of layers to this, tax delinquent, abandoned properties, housing issues. We're going to come back to this conversation and talk about the policy issues, Mr. Walker, that you touched on at the end, in terms of how we implement this process moving forward. But I, clearly, this should have been the only topic on tonight's agenda instead of the second topic. So, note taken. We will have this for a special session coming up soon. Thank you.